Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the March 11th, 2025 work session. It's 5:00 PM. We're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. The members have an agenda before them. Is there a motion to approve?
I would like to make a motion to change the agenda. Under Presentation and Discussion Items, item number C with Budget Timeline, move it to the front to item number A within the same section of Presentation and Discussion Items.
Second. So we have a motion by Mr. McCall to modify the order of Presentation and Discussion Items, moving C to the first item, a second by Mr. Grimes. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. All right. With that, welcome. We're going to stand if you can for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We'll take a moment for silent reflection. All right. Good evening, everyone. We've got quite a few items on the agenda today, so we're going to get right into it. First up is Mr. Larry Hamel with a presentation of the 2526 Budget Timeline.
Good evening. Tonight, we're just going to discuss, in quick succession of a couple of slides, how the budget process works, and for the current year as well. So basically, we have three steps to the budget process. The first step is we start working on operations. That starts back in November, right before Thanksgiving. We open up the operation budget in the next year Budget Module, which is the module we use in UNISYSTEM to start inputting everything. It started as a zero-based budgeting process. There's nothing in there. It's blank. So every department is sent an email, and we tell those departments to go ahead and start entering their budgets. We usually give them a deadline sometime in January to get that information in there and done. That gives them before Christmas and a little bit after Christmas to work on it and get it in there. So that means every single department outside of the salary benefit projection, so that would be like Finance, School Administration, and so on, they all enter their budgets in every department. Then starting in January, what I'll do is I'll go in there and look at every single budget, broken down by function code, by program code. And when I do that, I just review it to see how, what they're asking for, if it's a new item, if it's an existing item, what the historical data on the item is. For example, we'll look at fuel cost. What was fuel cost spent on last year, the year before that? What were the circumstances behind the fuel cost? Does it look like fuel costs will be more this year? Does it look like it'll be less? What's going on in the economy right now? We look at those kind of factors. Then, once I get done reviewing all the budgets by myself, we have actual meetings with each department individually, and we sit down. And that process takes about a week or two weeks, in terms of sitting down with each department, going over each individual budget. And it could take as quick as an hour, or it can take as much as a couple hours for each department to go through that process. Then, once that's done, I up, we update all the budget modules for each department based on changes we agreed upon. And then I put that information together, and I get that information to Mitch about this time of the year in terms of just initial numbers, what we look at.
And Larry, just for clarification, when you're talking about a zero-based budget, you're really talking about the operational budget only on that?
Correct.
Because the rest of the budget, 90% of it nearly, is people?
Correct.
And there's a, I think, a fair assumption from year to year, we're going to try to carry over the people that we had in the previous year.
Right. And I'll talk to that process when we get to step three, I mean, step two. Then in February, what we do is, once we get the numbers, well, the numbers come from Matt's group. The allotment sheets are put together by Derek's group, and then we send all that information out to the schools to look at. Shortly after that, what I will do is I will pull those same numbers and update the amount of money we give the schools for their budgets. And then we send that out to the schools, and typically, they start putting their budgets in there as well for each school. And then we get that information back, and we'll sit down and review that and make sure they're within the guidelines of how they spend the money. Then in March, the schools upload all their budgets, and then, like I said, we go back and review that. The operation budget itself doesn't have any salary benefits. It's particularly your fixed costs and your variable costs that need the school run. So you have electricity, water, fuel, paper, all those items you have to have for a school to run. Any questions about step one?
And the school budgets, Larry, are basically, they're all gauged on a per pupil.
Correct.
So you can sort of predict what the local school budgets are going to be, their instructional monies, that we'd call them, is really based on projected per pupils.
Correct. And remember, I guess it was two years ago, or maybe three, we upped the amount of money we gave them per pupil? Step two, salary benefits. So in December, Matt, the Chief Facility Officer, provides student counts based on what he has in December. And then Assistant Superintendent of HR, Derek, creates the allotment sheets. He reviews those allotment sheets, and then he gets them out to, if I'm mistaken, Derek, early January? Yes. And he goes over the allotment sheets with all the different principals at the school levels. During that timeframe is when the superintendent, excuse me, the Assistant for HR, Derek, as well as myself, meet both with, well, he meets with the schools to go over the sheets to see if there's any feedback from them. But then he and I meet during January, February with all the departments for their list of potential positions they would like to have going into the next year. Then after Derek and I get done looking over those lists, we take that list and, based on previous comments or suggestions we had for Mitch, talking with him earlier about what we should allow and not allow, and then we try to narrow that list down to what we think is absolutely necessary positions, and bring that to Mitch's attention, so he can start looking at that list. In February and April, what we would do there is, is once we kind of get a feel for what the expenses are going to be, in terms of whether we're going to go with a standard salary schedule, or with any COLAS, whether we're going to have steps or not, also based on what information we get from the state, on any changes to TRS and healthcare and et cetera, we start putting that information to what we call a salary benefit projection module. And once it's in there, I have to start running the different levels of reporting that not only produces a report for us to look at, but also updates the salary benefit projection module. Now, some of these reports can take as little as 30 minutes to run, some of the reports can take as many as four hours to run. It just depends on how big the report is and what we're trying to do. So how that happens is, we apply the new pay scales, which is the contract report, then we reply the step report, which updates everybody by one step, and then we apply benefits on top of that. And then we have to go back and make small changes based on the errors we get and go fix the errors, and then reapply all those reports. Once that done, I take that information and I input it into the salary benefit projection, gets inputted into the operations budget, so they get merged. At that point, we have the entire budget itself ready to go between salary benefits and operations.
And him running that, for our new board members, running that in a couple of different versions, with steps, without steps, with COLAS, without COLAS, that way, we can, as we get ready to present to you deeper into the spring, have a better picture of, okay, at least on the cost side, this is what it would look like. We may have two or three versions of that, and then we got to sit and wait for the next step, which is the revenue piece.
Correct. And so step three, which kind of happens between two and three to a certain extent, depending on what I'm looking at, is what I'll do is I will go in there and look at historical data with a worksheet that kind of gives me idea how we're in their current year up. So what it does, it takes current data, it takes the budgeted data, and then we do a analysis based on how much of the year has gone by versus budget data. And then we look at the trend for the current year that affects that budget data, and it gives us a projection of how we're going to end the year out. We take that, compare it to other years going back historically, and then we try to figure a timeframe of what we think is going to happen next year. For example, right now with interest income, we're having a good year. We had a great year last year. With that being said, what I'm having to do now is look at the news and check out the market watch to figure out the potential for interest cuts over the 2025 and 2026. So right now, I have three potential cuts, this June, this December, and next May or June, as cuts to the interest rates. So I have to calculate those interest rate cuts into my calculations in terms of what that would look like. Now, if things change in the next several months, and it gets better, and they say there will be less cuts, then I can go back and modify that information. If things come out worse and say there may be more cuts, then I can go back and modify that as well. So sometimes, when you're looking at the revenue projections, it's not just a straightforward, this is what it's going to be. As the months go by, as we're getting closer to what you're going to finally vote on, we may have to modify that based on how the information comes into us. The two main things, though, about the revenue projections, which I really don't have any control over, is QBE and property tax. Now, with property tax, we know we have the 4% flat rate cap right this year going forward. My initial talks with the Tax Commissioner's Office is that they went ahead and told me to use the 4% number for now. They're confident we think we're going to meet the 4% number. What we don't know is how much growth is going to be in the current tax digest that might go over that 4%. So we're kind of waiting to get some more information from them. The biggest thing on their side that they're having issues with right now is because that cap's coming in place, and because the way it's set up and how it affects certain things, they're going to modify it in their system based on the county voluntary home state exemption as well. But that means you have to get their whole program rewritten. They're telling me right now that they're being told that that possibility may not be done into early May to as late as late June. So that's kind of holding us back on what those numbers are going to look like. But like I said, I've gone with a flat 4% as now, as a calculation going forward. QB numbers are, well, should be coming out in the next week or two, so I'll have a better idea what the QB numbers look like. In the meantime, I will keep track of the other categories, which would be like intangible tax, real estate transfer tax, and those kind of categories that I don't have control over, but we can at least talk to the Superior Court or the Tax Commissioner's Office to see how that going, how those collections are going. One thing we do need to be aware of, though, is TVAT, which is the tax we get for car sales. Right now, when you read into the economy, you're hearing a lot of things about, you know, defaults in car loans are increasing, things like that. So that may be another area we have to be very cautious about how that number looks like going forward for the next year. But once we get most of the information together, we can definitely have some kind of budget for you at that point to put together in May with a work session, at least to give you a primary, initial budget to look at going forward from that point. What I'm afraid of is, is that some of the numbers might change going into May and June, and we may have to adopt some different changes if we come back and relook at it. But in the meantime, we'll definitely try to have our budget hearings and our mills roll back during the June-July time period. So we may be looking at July this year, or possibly August, which means we may have to do a continued resolution for the July and August budget period for the 2026 timeframe. Any questions?
And I appreciate you putting this together for us, Larry. You know, we've got three new board members, a new superintendent, so we're really going into this a little bit deeper in the weeds earlier than we have in the past, and I think it's good. I think this is maybe a great precedent for the future, just to get everybody, you know, on board and understanding some of the variables throwing at, being thrown at us. Like, right now, there are several things in the legislature, as we see that more education bills than I think we've ever seen in one year, you know, that have made it through to crossover day. And there's a lot of potential unfunded mandates that are embedded in there, and all those will obviously affect the, you know, the final budget. So I appreciate it, Larry.
I do have a question. What is it, what's the primary factor that's driving us all the way to May to have a draft budget? Is it the digest, the value of the digest?
No, it, most of it is, is once I get to this point where I'm in the salary benefit projection, it just takes so long to run those reports. And then, once you run them, if there's more than one scenario, then I got to go back and do a clone, and then run that scenario on a different clone. It just takes, like, some of the reports can take four or five hours to run under one report. So, you know, if I'm, if I'm running 20 or 30 hours worth of reports, it's going to take one week just to run all the reports for one scenario for one type activity, which is a flat.
And I think the reality is, a lot of these, we could have projected budgets for you much earlier than May. The fear in that is putting it out there, then having to go back and redo it again when more things trickle down, and then putting it out there and then having to redo it again. So what I've asked Larry to do is create several different scenarios of budget that we can maybe look at early, but I think you want to get as close to, as close to the final, you know, the final bell down at the legislature and then seeing which of those gets signed into law by Governor Kemp and so forth, before you can do a real finalized budget, which would be May. But I think we're going to have, more than ever before, Chairman Ladd does, we're going to have several scenarios for you to look at prior to May.
Yeah. And we've talked about this, but with three new members, we might need some extra time. It's going to be their first time looking at these things.
Some of the other challenges we have is QB typically doesn't get done until late March, early, early April, in terms of them getting the final numbers to us. The other thing I'm worried about is, TRS is kind of tied in. We already know what that is. It's a huge increase this year. What I'm worried about is the healthcare cost increase. It's just significant this year. It could run us 10-plus million dollars just for the healthcare.
For the third or fourth year in a row.
Actually, today, they released a house, and I was going to talk about this during my update, they released a house draft budget, and they've added, I think it was $100 million to offset this TRS increase. So they're going to cover the certified, not the non-certified.
Right.
That's great news. Yep.
Something.
Any other questions?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hamel.
All right.
Next up is Dr. Josh Lowe with an Alliance Academy for Innovation update.
Chris, Chris, you're, Miss Sarah.
Sorry. Student Services Update with Miss Sarah Taylor. Sorry about that.
Josh, if you want to give it.
Good afternoon. First, I'd like to thank the Board of Education and Mr. Young for giving us this opportunity to share our department's restructuring and our vital work we do to support the students' educational success. I'm excited to hear today, I have alongside most incredible, dedicated, talented directors, Amy Chang and Cara Huthsbyth, who will be sharing more about our ongoing efforts. Our primary focus revolves around board goal number two, the learner experience. We are committed to ensuring that every student has the support they need to thrive academically. To do this, we align three elements: the learner profile, the district strategic plan, and our individual school improvement plans. And together, these guide our efforts to meet the needs of every learner. And then, within our strategic plan, we focus on two critical areas. One, increasing student achievement and growth. We establish that we want to make a 3% increase or more in our CCRPI scores in both content areas and subgroups. We also, number two, want to increase our student cognitive engagement. This is really a district-wide initiative supported by multiple departments, such as teaching and learning, technology, and student support. One example of the work that we are doing with our English language coaches and our special education coaches, they work directly with our teachers in the classrooms, and they model the different engagement strategies for student learning. So, under the leadership of Mr. Young, and with the guidance he has provided for all cabinet members, he has spent a considerable, we've spent a considerable amount of time refining our vision. Our vision is simple, yet powerful. We strive to provide high-quality education for all students, ensuring that every learner can excel and reach their full potential. To achieve this, we are committed to closing academic gaps, fostering an inclusive and supportive environment, and cultivating a reputation for excellence. Our goal, we want our students to thrive, make connections, and feel empowered to be their best, equipped with knowledge, skills, and the confidence to succeed. So, how do we achieve this? In our department, we make this vision a reality by using the Georgia multi-tiered systems of support. MTSS is a data-driven framework that ensures that we identify where supports and interventions are needed, we address challenges in behaviors, academic, and well-being, and we promote achievement, growth, and engagement for all students. The key component to this framework is our tiered support systems. As you can see, our Tier One are universal instruction for all students, which is led by Dr. Amy Bartlett and our Teaching and Learning Department. But Tiers Two and Three are targeted interventions for students who need additional support. These interventions are the core to our Student Support Services Department, and are strengthened by our most recent restructuring. This new structure allows us to focus intentionally in delivering the support for some of our students that need it for success. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Amy and Cara, who will dive deeper into the work that we're doing.
All right. Thank you. I am happy to share what federal programs is currently working on. Since we have already started planning for FY26, I wanted to explain the process that we use on how we determine how federal programs is used in Forsyth County schools. School systems in Georgia apply for federal funding using the consolidated application process. We engage in Georgia's systems of continuous improvement, which is the wheel diagram you see on the screen. Within the framework, the green arrows are how we use the process phases, and the pink-colored systems are the lenses through which we look to determine how each system is functioning within Forsyth County schools. At the center of our work, of course, is how we support the whole child in our district. We begin by gathering data for each system. The coherent instructional system is achievement and instruction. Professional capacity is teacher recruitment and retention and professional learning. Supportive learning environment, which is data related to the supports we provide for students and academics and well-being, including behavior. Family and community engagement and leadership-related data. After we gather data related to these systems, we engage in the comprehensive needs assessment to start the continuous improvement process, which is the identifying needs portion of the wheel. A focused group of stakeholders comprised of teachers, leaders, students, families, and community members gathers three times each spring to do a comprehensive data analysis, which identifies areas and strengths, identifies areas of strength and opportunities for growth, and begins to select interventions, which is the second step on the wheel. After our CNA committee identifies and prioritizes needs and proposes interventions, we seek system-wide input from all of our stakeholders on proposed goals and action steps. These are the needs and interventions that the CNA committee has proposed. We do this both in person and through a posted survey online. After all input has been gathered, I combine all of the CNA data analysis work and all of the stakeholder input to develop our consolidated LEA Improvement Plan, also referred to as the CLIP. The CLIP is the plan we sent to the Georgia Department of Education that describes how we intend to utilize federal programs' funds to support students, teachers, leaders, and families in our district. The action steps become the supplemental expenditures that we fund with federal programs. This is the plan implementation phase. We then move into the implementation of the plan during the following school year and begin the action steps. As the school year progresses, we move into the examining progress phase as we are required to gather data on each of the action steps in the CLIP. We monitor the implementation and the effectiveness at a minimum of twice per year, which is submitted to the Georgia Department of Education. These were the assessed needs for FY25 that were out of our comprehensive needs assessment, which helped us develop our current CLIP goals. Two of our goals are CCRPI-related, so we will report on the progress toward the action steps in June to the Department of Education, and we look forward to the results of CCRPI being released next school year to see if we met our goals. Here are the funded programs that Forsyth County Schools currently receives funding for. Title I Part A funds staff and interventions in our Title I schools. Family engagement opportunities supports our neglected and delinquent facilities, Jesse's House and Baldridge, as well as students in foster care and those that are identified as homeless. Title I Part C supports students who have been identified as living in a family that has a temporary or seasonal agricultural occupation. Title II Part A supports teacher recruitment and retention, as well as teacher and leader professional learning, which includes our Forsyth Teacher Academy staff, some of our English learner coaches, a leader coach, and other content area professional learning. Title III Part A funds support supplemental instruction for English learners, provides learning opportunities for teachers of English learners, which includes also some of our English learner coaches, and English classes for our families. Title IV Part A supports a well-rounded and safe and healthy education for our students. The MV grant is a competitive grant that we apply for every three years, and that supports students who are identified as homeless in addition to Title I Part A. And IDEA supports students with disabilities. I wanted to highlight a few interesting facts from our department. One in five students currently in Forsyth County schools receives free and reduced lunch at our October FTE count. That was approximately 21%. Our ESOL population has grown 103% in the last 10 years. And one of the things I'm actually most proud of coming out of federal programs is that we're currently serving approximately 386 of our most academically at-risk homeless, foster care, neglected, migrant, and English learners with supplemental tutoring services through federal programs. And finally, we are currently in our second year of implementation of EduClima, which is a platform teachers and leaders use to monitor interventions that are being used with students in that MTSS process. This program gives educators a clear visual understanding of how students are progressing and helps them in decision-making for each and every student. I will now turn over the presentation to my colleague Cara Huthsbyth, who will share all of the great work going on in special education.
Thanks, Amy. Good evening, everybody. So just a little bit about special education here in Forsyth, and I was able to share some of this at the board retreat with you guys, but we've also seen significant growth in the area of students with disabilities here in Forsyth since 2014, about a 38.7% percentage of growth. So we're serving just over 7,000 students with disabilities at this point. 77% of those students with disabilities are served at their homeschool through what we call our interrelated program. So they receive services in the general education setting, and once it's determined by a team that a child needs more than that, that's where we have our specialized instruction program. So currently, we're serving about 23% of our students with disabilities in those specialized instruction programs. We have a total of 232 classes within specialized instruction across the district, 80 of those being accommodated curriculum. So those students are working on a general curriculum and a general ed diploma. 152 of those are what's called a modified curriculum, so they are working on an alternate diploma track. Some additional programs that we support are Special Needs Preschool Program. So you guys may know that we have an obligation to serve students ages three through 21 with students with disabilities. So our Special Needs Preschool follows that same continuum. We have supports out in the community, and we also have preschool classes at our elementary schools. Our Compass Program supports students that require therapeutic intervention for behavior. And our iFocus program similarly provides behavior intervention, but for students working on that modified curriculum. And then we have our Project Life Rise programs that support our students who have met academic goals. So they are pretty much finished with their modified curriculum, and they, they're our students that are between ages 18 and 22, and we're working with them on job skills. Because we also have an obligation to report to the state our graduates and what they're engaged in. So we have to report whether they are gainfully employed or in a post-secondary educational program. And so our Project Life Rise programs really help to establish those partnerships among the community for those students. So we always want to serve our students in the least restrictive environment, which would be at their base school, and we're proud of our 77% of those students doing that right now. This year alone, we have moved 55 students out of a specialized instruction program back to a base school. So that's really exciting, and we have had 27 students require more support and need one of those specialized instruction programs. So just a little bit about our staff within our department. We, our focus really is providing on-demand support to schools, whatever that might be. So a lot of that has consisted lately of providing behavior support to schools with some of our coaching and our board-certified behavior analysts, who really, we meet weekly as a leadership team, and we talk about all the needs across the district as they relate to special education, and then we deploy for the following week support from our team to ensure that our schools feel that on-demand coaching and support from our team. Our facilitators are really one of the lifelines of our program. They do really all things special education, anywhere from working directly with a student to managing iFocus. to managing IP meetings, to writing behavior plans for students. We have some fabulous specialized teachers that work directly with students through hospital homebound, through adaptive PE and music. Our instructional coaches really are key in providing professional learning to our special educators, and I'll talk a little bit about those programs in just a minute, as well as our transition supports that I mentioned. And our school psychologists really help with that collaboration, all the way from eligibility to students that are in our programs and helping us make decisions for those kids. So points of note, we have a fabulous team, and we have to all get along to, in order to provide that on-demand support, and we do a great job of that. So we're proud that we've had a 91% retention rate within our department over the past three years. From my department alone, we have supported 980 IP meetings this year, and we also monitor 504 plans through our department. So we monitor about 2,900 students with 504s across the district, and we provide professional learning to those 504 leads at the schools as well. Professional learning is a big part of what we do because we have that obligation to not only provide tier-one support to our students, but we have to layer in what's called specially-designed instruction. So that's kind of the whole crux of special education. What are you doing that's unique and different above tier-one? So that's where our professional learning is really key to ensuring that our teachers understand how to do that. We have two new professional learning programs that we're really proud of. Our Tribe program is for teachers in years one to two of special education, so we have 90 teachers involved in that this year. And they get substitutes on a monthly basis to come and work with our experts in our department on all things special education so that they can implement those back at their schools. And kind of on the other end of the spectrum, our Academy is for our seasoned special educators, and it's really an effort to retain them in those positions and also provide leadership opportunity for those teachers. We also offer robust parent training sessions. We've done 17 of those this year on various topics, and we do those after hours so that parents are able to attend. So that's just a little bit about special education.
So again, I might take a moment just to say thank you for letting us present and be here this afternoon, but I do want to ask and recognize our incredible team that is really a support to our department. If you guys don't mind standing up, if you're part of Student Services, all the hard work. This team is absolutely fabulous, and we could not do it without them, so we really appreciate their dedication to our department. So any questions?
I would just like to note that this was very good information, not only for new board members, but I think for the community, because as a community, we think about a high-achieving school system and all the accomplishments we're having annually. But then you go down and look really at the other side of the spectrum of the ones that need, the needs of the community, right? And, you know, 20% free and reduced lunch, that's a large number. Is it probably right about 13% of the student population's in special needs? Is that about right? Yeah, 14%? And so that's a, that's a huge need for the community. The special needs program has grown 38%, almost 40% over the last couple of years. I mean, so that's a big number. And I think it's a testament to you guys, being the leaders and caring for the students, but also it's a testament of the school system and how diverse it really is, and it's good for the community to know how diverse it is.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I got a couple of questions. I'm sorry.
Were you waiting for Mr. Grimes?
I thought you were about to say something. I wanted to just say, Kara, for you, you know, I think one thing on here was Compass that you talked about, G-Nets, and I think that is a program that's been outside. We've kind of supported it. Maybe talk just a little bit how we've brought that in-house, maybe some, what some of those benefits have been.
Yeah, absolutely. So Compass was previously our G-Nets program, and we decided a couple of years ago, we really wanted to treat it more like our iFocus program, which we support in-house, and we still supported G-Nets. They were on the other end of my office even when they were G-Nets. But the benefit to having it become kind of under our umbrella, just like iFocus is, is we provide now our own behavior support to that program. Whereas previously, we were having to go through Pioneer Risa to have their behavior specialists come in and work with our team, and we just felt like the students are transitioning so often from Compass to our base schools and the other way that we really wanted that continuity of support for those students to be with our staff members. So it really has been a huge benefit. Kathy Medic runs that program, so I am now evaluating her versus her being evaluated by Pioneer Risa. So she's been part of all of our meetings this year, and it's just really been a good collaboration, and it continues to grow in that way. We have some, some plans for next year to make that an even smoother transition for our students.
That's great. And I always enjoy seeing pictures of, from different businesses from the Project Life. You know, that they, I saw they were visited the fire department headquarters, I think, last week or last couple of weeks. But, I mean, they, do they, do we have regular partners that, you know, there's?
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, if you get a chance, we'll have their graduation coming up, and I have never left there dry-eyed. I mean, it is amazing to see mostly what it does for the adults in these businesses like Seaman and Northside Hospital. When these kids go to school, their classroom is at that business. So they show up every day at Northside, and they do on-the-job training for whatever their role is at that point. And we've actually had several of the students be able to become employed with these companies after they graduate. So it is just amazing to see. Susan Darlington is phenomenal in the partnerships that she's created for those, and that continues to grow as well.
Awesome. Thank you.
Oh, okay. Thank you for this. It was really good information, and the visual, it was visually appealing. I wanted to ask, does every school have a behavior coach? Because I saw it was said, "school-based behavior coach."
Not currently through our department. We have a team of four behavior coaches that we, like I said, every week, we sit down and on Fridays, and we say, okay, who's, who needs support for the following week? And so we deploy those people. As well as our facilitators, we go out too, because we don't have enough bodies to support 43 schools. But no, some of the schools have gotten creative with peer professionals or something to be, become the expert in behavior, and we do provide training for those school-based personnel. But from our department, no, we don't have a behavior coach for every school.
Okay. And I don't remember what slide it was on, but I saw something about improving engagement. And so I had written down, what tools are you guys looking at to, for that, for engagement?
Well, and each department is different. So the technology department is kind of looking at how they, they define engagement. I know student support's looking at attendance to kind of be a part of the engagement. I know that Kayla Duncan in Teaching and Learning, she's doing some piloting on some tools where, as you go in and do classroom observations and checking off engagement. We are actually piloting with two schools on a program called Fundamentals, where the students assess themselves in the areas that maybe they're not excited about school, or maybe they don't feel like they have a connection with an adult. So there's a questionnaire that they take that we're, we're piloting at both schools, and so far, it's been very successful. So again, every department's working on that area.
Okay. And then with tier-two and tier-three, when we start supporting students with needs, what metrics are like, what are you, what, what drives that decision if they need tier-two or tier-three instruction?
Well, again, that's through our multi-tier systems of support, and we look at all kinds of data. Our universal screener is iReady, and so we definitely use iReady to help drive the first part of that. But then, once we, we, if the student hits a certain level on that, then we kind of dig in deeper with some FastBridge data to look at so that we can really narrow down what the deficit is so that we pick the right intervention.
Is there like a hard and fast, like cutoff percentage-wise, or like a number on iReady?
We have a number, but again, it, we don't want to base it just on that sole data point. So we do look at other factors.
Okay.
And for tier-three special education, once, let's say they're in tier-two, and teams feel like they're really needing more support because it's individualized, then we would go to the psychologist and say, look, we really need a full psychological at this point because there's certain eligibility criteria that the student has to meet in order to be eligible for special education.
Right, okay. And then do all of our schools have access to the same interventions for those? Because I know those, you have to pick one that's on a state list, right?
We do for dyslexia, but we have a multitude of other areas, ranging from behavior to math to all of those different things. But yes, we have in the past few years had such good collaboration with teaching and learning so that we ensure that regardless of the tier, the kids have access to the same interventions, and then we support that from our department for students with disabilities as well.
And what would you say if you had to just guesstimate what percentage of those interventions are technology-based?
Great question. Not as high as you would probably think. I would say our, one of our, I'm not going to make Kristin Bonus come up here right now, but one of our only interventions that is, is computer-based would be iReady. The rest of them may have a component of technology, but the biggest part of it is that direct teacher instruction. And even with iReady, we, you know, we have done tons of training on the reports, and we now every month give a GOAT trophy that we pass around to. It's not the usage, because we said if we go by usage, that's just how often you're putting kids on a computer. So it's the growth. And so we hand out trophies to the schools that show the most growth, and typically, it's not the most usage. Those things don't go hand-in-hand.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you, guys.
Anyone else?
Sure.
I just wanted, I just want to thank, two things I would just point out super quick. When you look at our great graduation rates, that doesn't start in high school, and it doesn't just start in tier-one. Obviously, tier-one instruction's huge, but when you talk about moving the needle academically, it's, it's this group that has done just a phenomenal job. And the other thing I would say is their ability to build relationships with our families with special needs children is unbelievable. That I cannot say enough. When advocates throughout the Southeast are asked about where to send their kids to school with IPs, they, they send them to Forsyth County schools. It's because of their leadership.
But we're full now, so we're.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
All right. Now, it is Dr. Josh Lowe with Alliance Academy for Innovation update.
Tough one to follow there. They did a great job. But just wanted to talk for a moment. In recent weeks, we've had discussion about athletic consideration at Alliance Academy. Mr. Young asked me several weeks ago to start doing some investigation to be able to provide for you all both basically advantages and potential disadvantages for adjusting our current procedures to students participating in GHSA sports at a base school that attend Alliance Academy. So we'll go through a little bit of that, and I'll be happy to take any questions. Starting out, looking at our 2025 governance goals, the discussion here is really tied around the three that are identified, social, emotional health, the learner profile, and culture, climate, and community. And so that's kind of how we see this tying into our, to our effort this year. Just for anyone who's new or for those listening, a brief history of Alliance Academy. Alliance was designed as a standalone high school focusing on career pathways and workforce development open in fall of 2018. It was created to address a workforce skills gap that was identified at that time by the Georgia Chamber of Commerce, the Carl Vincent Institute of Government, and Forsyth County's Propel Initiative. It was a recommendation from a local district study on the graduate rate initiatives, benchmarking Forsyth County with others across the country. Additionally, it was provided, it was created to and designed to provide a career-focused education in a simulated work environment where students who attend commit to their pathways and/or other events there at the school, and not specifically to activities in their zone schools. And a couple more points, was created to prepare students for workforce through specialized career pathways, immersive experiences, and their career tech student organizations, also known in our schools as CTSOs. And the Alliance concept was developed by the school system, post-secondary, and other stakeholders, including government, nonprofit, and business, and was originally funded through the Public Facilities Authority, or the PFA. Looking at the current design of Alliance, obviously, Mr. Mercer, and I know some of you've been spending time visiting the school and has done a great job there building a sense of community. Kids there are Avengers and all kinds of things there tie into that, that mantra. Alliance offers a nu, excuse me, Alliance offers numerous athletic-related clubs from running to esports, weightlifting, badminton, pickleball, et cetera. And then some kids there are known to be participating in, you know, travel, recreation department, and other sports. Current students at Alliance, if you look in recent years, the last three years enrollment numbers are there. Annually, keep around 325-ish or so kids to have about 1,200, give or take, at the school in total, and the applications have rose steadily over the last three years, with this past year being a, really a large jump, up to 889 kids who applied to attend there. Looking at the next couple of slides, oh, pardon me, one, one more slide before that. Since Alliance was created in 2018, the Georgia High School Association's adjusted some things. When it was designed, the GHSA did not allow or did not permit students to participate in events at their originally-zoned school. Since that time, the bylaws were amended, and current bylaw 1.62N, and I'll just read this one for everyone to hear. If approved by the local Board of Education, students enrolled in a magnet or specialty school established by the local Board of Education shall be allowed to participate in GHSA extracurricular activities as a member of the school team for the school which they would ordinarily attend according to the local Board of Education attendance policy. So that has been the biggest adjustment and the approach to students' ability to participate since the school was created. So that's changed. And then, as I've also heard in recent weeks in discussion with different folks, the GHSA does now allow homeschool students the opportunity to participate if desired.
Do we have a number of?
Yes, there are currently 13 students in Forsyth County. Yes, sir. There are currently 13 homeschool students. The research we did through Nathan Turner and our current base school athletic directors, 13 students was the number that I was provided. Looking at the potential advantages and/or potential concerns, and I will say for these, we kind of cast the net for feedback, talked to, talked to our current principals and district leaders, as well as many, many of you I spoke to, also talked with some district leaders in surrounding communities that have similar schools to kind of understand what may or may not be working well for them. And so the advantages and/or concerns are a culmination of the feedback from those groups of people. Obviously, advantages, and those that know me know, I'm an old coach, coached for 13 years, so I know that there are certainly advantages to different sports and, and really just kids getting plugged in in general at school. The participation in GHSA extracurriculars obviously can provide students opportunities for healthy connections that exist through their specific offerings. Additionally, participation may provide students an opportunity to showcase their abilities in consideration for scholarships should they have the skill set that, that aligns to, to that. Through GHSA extracurriculars, students are often learn teamwork, dedication, grit, self-discipline, as well as a variety of other beneficial lessons that could be helpful throughout different phases of life. Students may develop additional time management skills by participation in such events, and it obviously will allow students to explore their academic passions and not have to choose not to participate in the GHSA extracurricular activities. And then the last number, the last bullet there circles back on what we, what I just shared, then that is that a lot, students would be allowed the same opportunity that current homeschool students in our community are afforded. Some potential concerns, logistically speaking, there may be concerns for students who commute to and from Alliance for practices at their base school, and in talking to others, just transportation logistics that exist, obviously, and providing their own transportation, would it impact their tardies, skipping, things like that, as well as when they do return to their base school, is there a situation with anyone monitoring them, or are they there unattended, or things of that nature? Increased time out of class and what impact that would or wouldn't have to Alliance's current attendance and graduation accomplishments. They're currently ranked among the highest in our district and typically have at or near a 100% graduation rate. Choosing between Alliance events and other AAI commitments, as those may be after-school events at Alliance and/or their zone school, if they choose to participate, they may have to choose which one to be committed to. If they choose to participate, they may have to choose which one to be committed to. In discussions with others, complexity for scheduling, some schools have to provide virtual options to be sure they get the credits. And y'all may know that Alliance currently, kids go to their base school and then ride the bus there and and back in the morning, so their their bell schedule's a bit different than traditional schools. So just having to look at that to be sure the kids are in class for the for the needed times to meet all their graduation requirements. Full team experience maybe lacking was a potential concern voiced by some as many school bond, many team bonds are those that exist during school hours, if it's weight classes or or things like that, that they may see their coach throughout the school day. And then at Alliance, quite a few kids apparently, based off what I've been able to research, are able to complete multiple pathways. Well, if you're coming and going, you may not have the time commitment to complete multiple pathways if that's what you're there for. And then just how, you know, figuring out how eligibility would work because the base school athletic director does that. If students were attending another school, we'd have to figure out the communication chain, the communication pipeline to ensure eligibility. Few additional considerations, not necessarily anything that's viewed as a advantage or area of concern, but just considerations, the current 25-26 lottery for next year's rising freshman already occurred during the 2024 out of district window back in the fall. Alliance currently has an esports team in existence, so we may need to look if we choose to do this and potentially allow them to have their own GHSA team, not to not to essentially negate their team that's already in existence. I shared this while ago, but potential safety or supervision concerns if kids are coming and going to the base school throughout the day to make practices or if the team's leaving early for games or or things like that. One to consider is what impact would this have or not have on the culture built at Alliance through the career tech pathways that exist there? And then would this potentially, in time, just for consideration, would this create a ripple effect where other sports or activities or whatnot may may have students wishing to return to their base school for other activities? And if that at a future time is determined to be something to to consider, what impact would that have on really Alliance or the other schools in general? With that said, that covers what what I was able to put together in the timeframe that we looked at, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Dr. Lowe, I got a couple of questions. The you said, based on the GHSA rules about the attendance policy, right there, does our current attendance policy cover, you know, allowing, if, you know, if the school and we were to not change the policy, but change the procedure, would our current attendance policy cover and meet the intent of the GHSA rule?
I don't believe that our current attendance policies, and I would have to verify that, Chris, but I don't think that we would be in violation of any attendance policy if the student was supposed to be at the other school during that time, then that's something we would have a probably a procedure that would be allowable.
Okay. And then on the other, on another slide, you talked about some of the after, some of the Alliance commitments, you know, that maybe students have to choose after, between GHSA events and their Alliance commitments. What would those commitments be?
You know, just in general, excuse me, looking at how many career tech organizations operate, there is after-school events. It could be, I'm just hypothetical here, any of the CTSOs could have after-school events or so many, you know, time after, time after school, much like, I don't want to call it a practice, but their own time to get together, or many of the CTSOs go on trips in the spring where they have state national competitions. Oftentimes, those groups do that. I know even in my own experience as a former principal at a traditional high school, the kids would often meet after school and do those things. So that's just one more consideration if they're at Alliance. And hypothetical, one of their, one of their CTSOs are practicing and they're playing baseball at another school, which one would they have to choose to miss is what I was referencing there, so the CTSO commitments.
So, you know, we talk about safety, so my question is around the transportation logistics and, you know, students left unattended, right, essentially? I had opportunity to go to Alliance today, it's a phenomenal facility, and one of the questions that I asked was, you know, how many bus riders versus car riders versus, you know, self-driven students? And this was a hallway conversation, so the the response that I got was about half of the students are bus riders and about 20 or so percent drive themselves and the rest are dropped off. So in thinking around, let's just say the bus riders, when they go back to their home school, they arrive at the home school during the time when the other students are released, correct, right? Is it towards the end of the day?
They arrive back toward the end of the day, near the, near the, typically prior to the other students being released, and there then they have to be there for a bit before the other bell rings for them to get on the buses to go to their home. What I'm referencing there is not specific to that, should a child ride the bus back and want to want to go to ball practice, but if they were providing their own transportation and more so on days that the team potentially leaves early to make an away game or something like that, if they drove themselves back and how would they would essentially have that time where, you know, hypothetical times, but the team's getting out at 2:30 and they get back at 2:00, they got 30 minutes unattended before they, the coach and the team would be where they were getting to, was sort of the logistics I'm referencing there.
But the bulk of students being transported back to school would be around the time that they're arriving now, so.
Yeah.
They would just be going to a practice.
Yes, sir.
So in terms of a potential safety of students, you know, on a regular basis, I'm not talking about the outliers, it would be consistent with what happens today. They would arrive around the same time, but they would be going to a practice.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions. There's there's several references to this could contribute to students being out of class more. Can you help me understand that because aren't these activities primarily after school or non-class time hours?
They are primarily in that timeframe, yes, sir. What I'm referencing is essentially that, and perhaps it is an outlier, but the days that the team leaves early, which I know is more frequent than than is often realized in the springtime, especially when you're looking at so many sports going on, if they're having away games with an Alliance student, they would have to leave during instructional time and go. That is not, to be candid, that dissimilar to how it's already done at traditional schools. The difference is with the commute, if they were traveling to, I mean, where Alliance is situated, if the student was at Lambert or Denmark, they would have to leave and miss class time, additional what the Lambert or the Denmark kid was missing because of the commute time, is what that's referencing.
I don't know, I don't know if you know the answer to this question because it's not specifically related to this, but are the, and I might get the name wrong on this, but are the kids at Lambert allowed to be part of this program where they leave early and go work or or they have enough credits where they leave campus early?
Yes, all all traditional high schools have students that are allowed to leave early if their credits are caught up and they have essentially an externship type thing, so to speak, yes.
So wouldn't that have similar, I mean, if anything, that's probably more contributing to them not being part of what's happening at Alliance or missing, you know, instructional time or being in the building less, but that that's allowed, that seems a little more, would pull them out more of the culture of the building, right, if they're able to leave, you know, early?
Potentially so, yes.
I think a lot of those issues that Josh is referencing, really, we're all sort of thinking about the varsity kids, the juniors and seniors who are caught up on credits and can, you know, leave early to go to work or they leave, but I think what where the concern comes in for for what I think Josh has referenced is you have those ninth and 10th graders, you know, that those are the teams that that generally leave early in the afternoons. They're generally not the ones leaving school, you know, for for working or dual enrollment or that sort of thing, but but they're they're leaving school particularly in the spring when you get to baseball and soccer and track, they'll leave earlier than normal. And so what Josh is saying is they've got to take and leave not only early from their base school, but if you're if you're traveling from Alliance to get back to your base school, you've got to factor that travel time in to get early to be able to catch the bus to go. So it's and it's probably, to be fair, I think it's probably more in basketball and in spring sports than than what you would find in the fall.
And those athletes that leave early, they're responsible to make up the schoolwork. Is that not correct?
Yes, sir.
So there we've, as we've been talking about this, there's been references to perhaps having to change the school's charter or what's the framework or the mechanism to make this change. According to this rule, it says, you know, has to be approved by the board. The way I understand board approvals, those are only done through resolutions or official actions. Should the board determine that it wants to go in this direction of allowing this, is that going to come in the form of board policy? Because just like we're having this public discourse about this decision, I think if anybody ever wanted to change it, they should have to have the same discourse, and board policy is probably the only thing that would require that, would mandate that public input.
Yeah, and I think that's one of the things we would, we'll talk to our to our legal advisor just to make sure if collectively the board feels that that we should do this, I think we would just want maybe some clarification on are we talking GHSA sports only or are we talking all, you know, all clubs and activities? And I think the conversation has been around, has been around athletics and GHSA competition. When it's a case where they have a team like esports, would a student be able to go from Alliance back to their base school or would it be acceptable for Alliance to then have their own GHSA version of esports? And so then all the others would be GHSA sports that they don't provide. I think we can provide that clarification in the form of a of a procedure or regulation, but I think to your point, I think that should be something that should be brought to the board so that a public discourse can be had on it and you and you vote perhaps a motion of support of that, but we can get the, we can get the legalese squared away.
One last question. I've heard a lot of references to commitments that were made to some of the people involved in whether it's funding or donating to the school or are there any binding commitments that prior boards have made where we can't change anything or we have a hard?
There's nothing binding, and I think in the spirit of when the school was put together, the private individuals and and the Public Facilities Authority, the idea was that this was going to be a different sort of school for kids whose focus is on the CTSOs, that is their sport, you know? Robotics may be their their football, but to be fair, that was also created prior to to GHSA's change in stance. It was done prior to Gwinnett and Fulton changing their stance with their magnet schools. And and so I think our parents have seen what's going on with their with our neighboring school districts, and that's why it's become more of a question the last two or three years, and then throw homeschool into the mix where homeschool kids are allowed to go, and so that's raised the question. I think that that probably creates the biggest support for why there should be a change. I think that the pushback on that that you would hear is is what Josh offered in one of his, in one of his slides today is is that you've got, yeah, you've you've got a school knowing how it's been set up. We still have 889 folks applying, knowing what the rules are, and 100% graduation rate. So, you know, this comes under question and during, you and I've had these talks, like, we're doing really good in certain areas. Well, this is certainly an area we're doing really good. Can we do even better? Like, are there even more opportunities to do better? And this may be one of those areas that that you guys have decided to take up and and, you know, either either way, we'll we'll make it work. We just wanted to make sure that the voices of the principals, that Mr. Mercer, who's worked so hard to, you know, to develop that culture there, that they wanted to, they wanted to make sure that that you were aware of some of the pros and cons of that from their logistical view on the ground. And and I will tell you, having been a principal, when the kids come back from Alliance and there's that 20-minute gap, that this doesn't change that at all, which is a good point, but those 20 minutes, we ended up having to assign an administrator or a teacher to go, you know, in essence, monitor behavior, you know, when they get back during that time, but this doesn't change that. But the biggest thing, you know, for this is, is if we do this, I think there has to be an understanding, just like with an out of district situation, that if if we're going to allow Alliance students to do this, they've got to be on the hook for transportation because our transportation is already already very tight at what we can provide at this point. So if if we're going to lift this ban, if you will, or allow them to participate in their in their base school, I think there's got to be some consideration given to the fact that that parents, if they if they choose this option, that they're going to provide their own transportation.
Can can I just ask?
At least in the short run.
In addition to that, if if a policy is needed to be created, are we able to put guardrails in place? And I'm just like, you know, making this up as I go, like, we're only going to allow GHSA sports and we're not, you know, and it identify what exactly we are going to allow, and then that would be the policy?
Yep. And again, we may not have to go to policy on that. I think that can be done because this is really, there's, there's, like Chairman Vada said, there's been nothing in writing that has forced this issue. It was a practice captured in the spirit of that. Now that things have changed, we can put into practice or just clarify in a, you know, in a regulation. If if legal tells us it would be better to do a policy, then we'll absolutely put a policy together and have that ready, you know, for you to consider as well.
Where does the, where does the rule stand now? Is it just in the application?
Yeah, and in the application and conversation with, yeah.
Part of the application, and they basically commit that they understand that they're just coming for Alliance events.
So it could be an application change.
Absolutely. Yep.
And I think we've talked a lot about athletics, but I think one thing to mention is GHSA, you know, if you look at all GHSA sanctioned events, right, it also includes drama because it is one act plays, it includes literary. So like it, and I agree, most things that GHSA sanctions is sports, right? There are also some outliers in that, that GHSA does sanction.
Yeah, with esports and literary, I, you know, I really believe that there's a potential that those could be handled at Alliance. The concern with one act, quite frankly, is that a lot of your fine arts are going to be are going to be co-curricular, kind of like marching band is in band is co-curricular. And I don't know, if you start down that, that creates a whole nother problem, so you would you would want to narrow it to to GHSA sports at this time and and only those that cannot be or are not provided by.
That's why I think specificity is going to be really important in whatever you all put together around athletics. I mean, that's where we're seeing the request come, and I think putting those guardrails as efficiently as possible is going to be important.
So what I would suggest is if we if we give Dr. Lowe and his team, if that's the the sense is you would like to see what it would look like, whether it ends up being a policy or a practice and an application with guardrails and specificity, that he can present a, you know, whether we have to do it for approval or just approve him to, you know, to proceed with that practice, I think would would be something we could put together for you this spring.
I mean, I don't know if we need, I would say we move forward with getting something we have to vote on, but I would say we continue to move forward and look at, you know, start taking those next steps.
I was going to add that to the future gender items on G, well, if you could, we'll talk about that.
Perfect.
Thank you, Dr. Lowe.
Thank you, Dr. Lowe.
All right. Next up, review of policy EDC with none other than Superintendent Young. But he seems to have.
About eight pages, we've lost our crowd. Actually, Mr. Satterfield has reviewed both policy EDC and EDDA, and there are no recommended changes at this time.
Any questions?
I would say just put them up and let them, you know, for the public and everything and.
Okay.
We'll start with EDC.
All right. And I don't have a visual or a presentation, but Chris?
They're on the.
Oh, okay, we got them up here?
Please, on, I'm right here.
All right. So policy EDC deals specifically with transportation safety. We've got three provisions in this policy. One provides the Board of Education and the School District and Transportation Department the authorization needed to provide transportation on school buses to students in Forsyth County. Two allows the department to develop procedures around said transportation, and then three encourages parents to and guardians to supervise students at bus stops. You know, that really where we hit the road with with safety is is the phrase in the first in the first sentence, in compliance of federal, state, and local laws, rules, regulations, and our procedures. So I, as Mr. Young said, I would recommend no changes to this at this time.
Anything from the members?
All right. Next one, policy EDDA, special use of school buses.
In this particular policy, you'll find, it's not found in every district, but what you will find is that 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 this particular policy.
We just need you to put it up there because this is all being recorded.
Yep, I got you.
Thank you.
Basically responds to a couple of specific provisions that are written into Georgia law regarding elderly citizens in 4H, and so I do not recommend any changes to this policy as well.
Anything from the members?
Nope.
Thank you, Mr. Satterfield.
All right. Elder, good evening.
All right.
Next up, legislative update with Mike Valdez, that was today? No, I'm kidding. I'm ready, guys. All right, so as Mr. Young alluded to before, it would appear that in the state of Georgia, passing education-related bills has become a bit of a professional sport at this point. So there is an enormous number of education-related bills making their way through the legislative process. We did hit a milestone in that process, which is crossover, which means any bill that didn't cross from one chamber to the other is done for the session. So we at least know which bills still have a possibility to advance and which are officially gone. So I'm going to focus on the six most important education bills, there's many more than this. All of these have at least a moderate to high chance of passing, many of them are related to school safety. The first is HB 268, the Safe Schools and Threat Management Act. This is a big, wide-reaching bill that touches many aspects of school safety, very well-intentioned, lots of good things in there. There's also some things in there that are raising eyebrows in, in the community, some monitoring things, some, some big government-type concerns that are, that are in there. It creates an Office of Safe Schools, which seems to have broad powers that are not perfectly defined yet, and it does create a, a fair number of unfunded mandates, while some are funded, there are some unfunded mandates in the bill. This bill has a lot of momentum, it might be one that as a, a system, we may want to give an opinion, I know we've been involved in the process, but it, it's one that will affect us, and it's one that it looks like will pass. Another one is Senate Bill 17, Ricky and Alyssa's Law, another school safety measure. This one also has strong bipartisan support, it mandates panic alert systems, and it mandates that school systems cooperate with law enforcement to map all of their buildings.
Have they put a timeframe in on, on when those would have to be implemented or, or purchased?
I can check, I don't have the answer to that right now. But that, that one does have a high possibility of passing, it has strong bipartisan support. Senate Bill 233, which is the Georgia Promise Scholarship Act, the School Vouchers Act, that one has come back into play, seeking some expansion of it, and also changing some of the minutia of it to make it clear that guardians or family members that are guardians of students can also apply on those students' behalf. So part of it is some administrative changes, and part of it is seeking an expansion. At the very same time, a very large cut to the funding of this program has been proposed as of yesterday, which basically takes close to two-thirds of the funding of that program away. So it's interesting, because that was proposed by a Republican, and this is largely a Republican measure, so there's trouble in paradise, so we'll see, we'll see what happens. Obviously, without that funding, that, that program will shrink significantly from 40-something thousand students eligible to less than 7,000. HB 340 is the Distraction-Free Education Act, basically the colloquially known as the cellphone ban. This is a pretty good bill that we've been looking at, it, it lines up really well with some of the work that we're doing. On April 14, we'll be having a community conversation about this subject, and what's a healthy cellphone usage looks like in our school system going forward. So this bill, I think, largely supports that, again, has strong bipartisan support, does come with some funding attached to it, so we'll see how that goes. House Bill 147 is the Safe Schools Act. This one is a kind of an add-on to the various school safety bills, again, also has pretty strong bipartisan support, it looks like it will pass. It enhancer, enhances teacher training on school safety, so it mandates some additional teacher training for school safety, and it introduces gang awareness training for educators. So looks like it'll be another one that passes. And then finally is House Bill 68, which is the draft 25-26 budget. So there is a lot of good news in the budget, there's a $612 million increase, which is a huge number, to QBE, QBE funding, which is very good. There's an additional $100 million contribution to the teacher retirement system, which I spoke today with the Chairman of Education in the House, and he assures me that that will eliminate the pass-down cost for certified personnel, not for classified personnel. So we'll see how that all pans out. There's an additional 50 million being allocated for school safety grants, that's an additional 21,000 per school. A $10.3 million increase in transportation funding, which is one of the things we asked for, it's a, it's a beginning, it's a good, a good start. And the other big, big increases in here are a $20 million increase for mental health grants for middle schools and high schools, which I know will be well-received, a $7.4 million increase for pre-K teacher pay parity, and a $10 million increase to boost after-school boost programs. So, good news in the budget, and a lot of, a lot of movement on educated-related bills. Those are the major ones, there are more, I'll take any, any questions if you guys have any. Nope. All right. And next up is future agenda items.
Yeah, I would like to request that the Alliance Academy for Innovation, policy, procedure, application, whatever, needs to be done on our next agenda for next week. Anybody agree?
I'll second that. Anybody else have anything?
Yeah, I would like to, I think, looked at the policy tonight about transportation safety, but I think it'd be good to do for a presentation for the board and, you know, for the public about the safety measures that we do, the inspections every year of school buses, and just kind of, you know, how, how safe school buses are, you know, and some of the testing that's been done. I think it, I think that'd be a good thing just for everybody to know.
And so is that something, maybe later, we can, we can put a, a date to it now, but, but April or May, to just give Mr. Satterfield and his team time to, to put it together?
And to add to that, it would also be good to discuss how, how important East Plus is for our transportation program and how it contributes to that program.
That would be great, Mr. Satterfield. April?
No, be a little
April, regular, or work session in April? That would be April
Was that a question?
April 15.
And maybe Mr. Satterfield
I'm, I'm going to talk to Mr. Satterfield, he's not on the spot, I may come back to you and ask that we push that to May, but we'll see.
Maybe Mr. Satterfield can tell us how to get people to stop speeding in the school zones.
That, that would be fantastic.
Okay. All right. Now that takes us through the rest, or the remaining part of the regular agenda, next up is executive session, do I have a motion to enter into executive session?
Make a motion when you enter into executive session.
For? For? Legal and personnel?
Legal and personnel.
A motion by Mr. Graham, second by Mr. Usherwood, all in favor? Unanimous. See you guys in a little.